Good afternoon. Time is now 1:41. Quorum of the Board is present. The State Board of Ed meeting, May 10, 2011, is called to order. First item is approval of State Board of Ed minutes from April 12. Motion?
So moved. Support.
Moved by John. Supported by Dan.
Not in order.
Not in order, sir, to make a comment on.
It's here before you vote on it.
Oh, these are on minutes.
It says, "Prior to vote." It says, "The public will be given an opportunity," it says, "prior to that vote."
Public participation period is coming up.
I don't think this is about this either.
It's about the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Well, go ahead, sir. Go ahead.
Okay. The one point I wanted to make is that it's been inaccurate because it doesn't list all of the board members. Constitutional member has a -- they've omitted Mr. Snyder's attendance. It's just a bad example of who attends.
It doesn't have anyone here.
Take your thought into consideration. Thank you, sir. Any further changes, deletions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you. Did you want -- yeah, we're going to go to public participation and then we'll come back to item seven. So, Mertz is getting out the timer. And then I think we were going to probably go to at least one of the items before our reports. Is that what you were thinking for the young folks?
Yeah. If people will indulge us, the -- some of the folks who are going to participate in public participation are interested in the resolution on diversity learning, so I was hoping we might bump that up on the agenda in terms of discussion action. My report is very short.
Okay.
Ready for public participation? There are three people that have given us forms. The first speaker is Dennis Awaki, and the second speaker, who will follow, Mr. Awaki, is John Love.
I keep a new one.
Thank you very much. Appreciate this.
Yes, sir.
My name is Dennis Awaki, and I live in Fenton, which is near Flint. I'd like to speak today about consolidation of the school districts. I've spoken with my neighbors, friends, probably, for years about this. I'm sure all of you have heard the same thing, you know, why don't we consolidate? Recently, I began to investigate the number of -- the number of school districts in the state, and we all know it's out of sight compared to most states. I don't know if we're first or second. Anyway, we're way up there. I had my state senator speak about two months ago at a meeting, and he threw out a figure of 550. At that time, I didn't realize there were that many. And then he said, "Well, that isn't even it. It's like closer to 750." You all probably know exactly what it is, but it's a lot. And I see with this, there's all these different superintendents and all the staff that goes under them, and it seems to me, if we could consolidate, there might be some more money to give to the kids, and maybe they could have some things like this computer stuff that's probably going to take over. I'll be long dead, but I'm sure that's going to happen. Anyway, we have three school districts in my immediate area, Fenton, Lake Fenton, and Linden, and this is about -- we're about 15 minutes south -- or 15 miles south of Lansing, uh, Lansing, excuse me, Flint. If these could be consolidated, I'm sure there would -- the taxpayers, obviously, would love it, and I would think that there would be an opportunity for kids to have a greater chance to get -- have the American opportunity that I had. I heard mentioned today the term, which I hadn't really paid attention to, economically disadvantaged students. Now, when I was a kid, I was poor, and, you know, I guess we were economically disadvantaged because I lived in a house that had no indoor plumbing for about four years before my folks were able to move out and move to a different spot. My own kids didn't believe me when I told them that, and their grandma had affirmed that. But I just thought that one of the positives we had, though, when we were poor, is that we had a mom and a dad, and they made sure that we got our schooling done. And my dad said to me, "If you're going to make anything of yourself, son, you've got to have an education." And they did it in all -- for all of us kids. There were six kids in my family. And I think that the -- if we could work somehow, I don't know, create some sort of environment so that kids, if it can't be at home, if there isn't a mom and dad at home, and I know there are plenty of homes that -- where that doesn't exist, and so many of my teacher friends tell me that that's the big problem, and, you know, the kids from stable homes, for the most part, they're doing pretty darn well. So, I just throw this out, that if -- maybe we could even get more volunteer work if people saw that we're trying to get our monies, save the taxpayers some monies at the high end, and get it to where it really belongs. In talking about this food stuff, this is part of that, in my view. Food in school, and kids getting obese. At our Rotary Club meeting this morning, we had some -- a group study exchange group from Japan. There's six, seven people of various professions come over, and we were hosting them in our area. And the young lady sitting next to me, her big thing was to go and visit all the McDonald's in the areas, because she said, "In Japan, the McDonald's are this big, and in the U.S., they're like that." So, I don't know. I don't know what's happening, but I'll tell you. I go out to everybody, seeing kids in my own area of Fenton. I have done some tutoring with kids, and still the teachers tell me, "Unfortunately, there are not enough of you to do this tutoring, and we've still got a problem because mom and dad aren't together." So, maybe I've spoken on a lot of different things, but I think we could start with this consolidation. I'm sure there's plenty of political lobbying done to say, "You can't do that, boy." But I hope we can consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Love, and he will be followed by Ashna Kana and Lokish Pagad.
Well, today, we're going to talk about outlook, the local control myth, the data situation, and last but not least, Detroit Public Schools and the Bob problem. As far as the outlook goes, the economic situation of this state is, as you know, awful. It's not going to improve for years because of a couple of basic flaws that are in the system. We've given all of manufacturing jobs to China so they can send back junk to our country. We have an invasion of people that can't even speak English, let alone read or write it, put into our school systems from Mexico. And then we have the lobbyists that run the state, and an example of that is the beer tax. It's been frozen for 50 years in Michigan at 1.9 cents a bottle. They run the system, and nobody wants to touch the beer tax. They raised it to 10 cents a bottle, you'd have $400 million in additional revenue. But the governor, when I talked to him, said, "No, we're not going to touch that. We're going to get the retirees." That's the kind of way we have this state run. The local myth. After our meeting, I went out and talked to the library, and they sent me back a list of the cases that applied. And one of them, the judge in the Supreme Court said, which is on the back of your form, "The State Board of Education is armed and charged exclusively with the power and responsibility of administering the public school system. The board has been directed, not by the legislature, but by the people, to lead and supervise the system." So, that's your duty by the Constitution and by the people. And somehow, we have to have challenges and figure out what we're going to do, and we can let -- if you had an army and you told five, 700 platoons to go out and fight the war, and you said, "Well, go out and figure it out. You go out and buy your arms and ammunition and report back," where would we be in a war on anything? We'd be out of luck. That's where we're at with the state of Michigan. Data? Well, here's our dashboards. They don't even compare. The governor's dashboard has different system of reporting than the one that is made by the State Board of Education. It needs to be the same, because otherwise, it's just confusing with the two formats. The titles are confusing. I show it to people post-secondary. They know that as higher education, and it's missing the important information, like the number of dropouts. Everybody wants to know how many dropouts we've got. You have zero proficient schools. You said there's 238, zero proficiency in the schools. What's the number? Where is it going? And this deficit, you want to wait three years before you report them. It should be reported in one year. Whatever the reason is, the problem is, they are spending money they don't have. They're not living within their means. Well, let's talk about Detroit for a wrap-up. We're going to have another miracle worker now, Bob. Now we've got Roberts. Well, I worked at General Motors when Roberts was there. He was involved in a provoked strike that cost the corporation $2 million in lost sales, and they didn't want to settle it, so they let it go on for months before they finally canceled the removal of these equipment from the Flint Metal Fab factory. Then, because of the lost production, sales kind of dropped. Well, Roberts was the vice president of sales, and under his leadership, quote, Cadillac lied about the sales figures at the end of the year so that they could still be ahead of Lincoln. They later admitted what they did, but that's the kind of integrity that we have. We need people that we're going to watch. There aren't going to be any miracle worker down there in Detroit. It's a big problem, and the State Board of Education, I don't know what your involvement was in selecting Roberts as the savior, but this is something that's clearly an obligation and a duty of the State Board of Education to fix it. Just let it go down there. We'll send one person down there. He'll take care of the fiasco, and somehow, it'll all be better. You need talent. You need the depth that you have up here at the State Board of Education to work on. So, we've got Detroit picks our dashboard, do something about local control myth, a myth, and when the outlook is just black. Thank you. I think my time's up. Thank you.
The final speakers are Ashna Kana and Lokish Pagad.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'm Lokish. I go to Farmington, and I'm a junior there currently.
And my name is Ashna. It's nice to see everyone again, and I am also a junior at Farmington High School. And today, we are again here to talk about diversity learning, but more depth in -- with the definition and more ways of how we can apply this to the local community level. So, our definition for diversity learning is...
Diversity learning is an approach in which students explore their own social identities and those of others who are different from themselves. Students understand similarities and differences in cultural groups, gain experience in intercultural communication and intergroup dialogues, as well as learning how to collaborate in addressing problems and issues in democratic society.
And as all we know, metropolitan Detroit is the most segregated area out of the entire United States, and we have a lot of different cultures here, and a lot of times, communities aren't communicating with each other because people need to be able to communicate with each other, and the only way to start that is knowledge about one another, and, you know, to get rid of ignorance and to get rid of stereotypes about one another so that we can all communicate well. And as we also know, we're now entering into a more global economy where once one enters the workforce, one needs to be able to speak with all different types of people, and the general knowledge base needs to be there. Also, we need to make sure that everyone gets access to the correct knowledge, and it has also been proven that with more intercultural insights, that, you know, you get to -- it's not -- we're trying to get rid of the ignorance. You get more open-minded, and you get to be able to listen to others, and this is very essential when going out into the workforce. Also, people need to understand problems and issues in a diverse democratic society and ways to collaborate in addressing them. And also, diversity learning promotes social well-being among students by reducing conflict and violence in schools. Some local ways that we have already put diversity learning into action is...
Is like a diversity class. Of course, the only way we're going to progress is if we implement it into schools. So, specifically in Farmington, what we did is, we have a diversity class at one high school, which is open to students for all the three high schools in the district. So, you know, teachers are willing to take time to create their schedules to work around so, like, students from the other two high schools can get to that high school. So, that's just one thing we did in Farmington District. On top of that, you know, in our specific high school, Farmington, we have a club called FCAC, Farmington Cultural Association Club, where, you know, it just brings about, like, you know, we're trying to bring about, like, all the different cultures, and like, you know, we're going to have a performance next November, you know, like, just a dance performance or something, all the different kind of dances. On top of that, the school of Farmington, I mean, the district of Farmington has decided to make the diversity class required in the IB curriculum, so that's a way of making sure everyone is exposed to this diversity class. And even simpler ways is just having assemblies, just discussing about diversity stuff, you know, easy, simple things that will make a big impact.
You know, eventually, what we want to do is the most efficient way we have discovered to do this is to implement diversity learning into existing classes, for example, English or history. What we do, what the school board has done a very good job of, is allowing children, like, in different grades, you have different required courses, and you have to read, like, a various amount of books and analyze them and so forth, and you are reading cultural books. And the content is in place. We just need to take that one step further and be able to talk about it. So, for example, in 10th grade, we were -- we had to read different cultural books, but we never actually talked about the different cultures. And not everyone knows the metropolitan Detroit is the most segregated area, and, you know, it is so segregated, it sometimes amazes me, like, the Eight Mile Wall that still stands today. And most importantly, we also need to make sure it promotes Michigan increasing diverse populations. So, Michigan is having an increasing diverse population and is a valuable asset for the state's future economic development, that people are able to communicate with one another. And at this time, we would like -- we would also like to say that we are definitely more than willing to volunteer to help any youth movement and immigration. So, if there's any questions, I guess, that would be. We really hope to have your support for the resolution, and we're really excited, and we really appreciate what the school board has done for us already and what we can achieve in the future.
Thank you.
As you know, the item's on the agenda in just a short time, and we'll move it up. I think the president's suggesting we move it up to accommodate you. Maybe then we could interact a little bit.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay with the board?
Is that our last question?
Yes, that's the last.
Would people support moving the agenda item to right now?
Certainly. Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
So, why don't we -- there were a couple of comments or questions, Dan, I saw.
Thanks, John. I -- if I hadn't exactly pulled it all together.
I can provide some verbal covering fire if you need. I'm known for that, Mary Ann. While Dan is gathering his incredibly concise and pithy and on-point comments...
You're going too fast.
So, I think we -- I was certainly taken and wanted to encourage the work that you're doing, both as young leaders and also to try to enhance the integration of appreciation for diverse ethnic populations for multiple reasons. So, I responded and, you know, encouraged us to draft a resolution as one piece that we could offer by way of potential State Board policy encouragement that supports your work to encourage districts to do what a Farmington has done, to try to blend this into the learning experience in a tangible way. I know the resolution, as we drafted it, several views that would benefit from a tighter definition of diversity learning. You've tried to offer that. I appreciate that. I was just, as you were talking again, I was reminded, I read this book recently, Jeffrey Toobin is about the Supreme Court, over the last, you know, eight years, and there was a good fuller description of the Michigan affirmative action cases that went to them. And within that description, it reminded me that the most compelling arguments that really apparently or allegedly, according to the insider account, turned the justices to be very supportive of the law school's affirmative action plan were from the military and the business community, saying, "We need our leaders to be not only comfortable, but excellent in working well in a plural world, in a multicolored world." And those were the most potent arguments that helped apparently sway the justices. So, I was just reminded of that, of the virtues of us learning how to embrace our diversity in our -- in all institutions, and wanted to, you know, encourage us to, with whatever amendments are appropriate, to offer State Board policy encouragement of the same. Is that enough time, Dan?
Almost right. I just can't believe I have to follow that. That was so eloquent.
Something pithy, though, now.
Right. Indeed, pithy. Maybe two things. One is, thank you. I would echo John's comments in terms of your leadership on this issue and willingness to champion it. Two quick comments. One is that my own experience, actually attended and graduated from that law school and can speak personally about the benefit that was enjoyed by the student body while I was there, when the student body had more minorities than ever previously and more women admitted than ever previously, and the level of -- just the robustness of the debate and conversation and learning that took place in that environment was something that I'll forever remember with pride. It was fantastic, just literally fantastic. The second thing is, these conversations can sometimes be threatening particularly to white men. I want to just put that out on the table for a moment and suggest that for white men, there's a tremendous opportunity and possibility here, and that this need not be threatening, that there's a win-win in this for all of us, in that we live increasingly in a multicultural society, and that the benefits to be gained far outweigh for everybody engaged in the work. The risk, whatever that may be, I actually can't imagine what the risk might be in this particular instance or in any involving this kind of work, but just invite white men to be true partners in the effort. It's a hand-extended invitation to those who might find this threatening.
Thank you, Dan. And I'm pretty sure Richard was next, and Mary Ann, and Nancy.
Well, talk about a difficult speech to follow. You know, your presentation before was very much appreciated by members of the board. You're very attractive people. It's a real feel-good kind of resolution that we're being asked to vote on. Now, what characterizes feel-good resolutions is to overlook contradictions. I first came up to this when I had a graduate class in education, and Dearborn principal was teaching us that we had to respect all students' cultures. And I posed the question, "Well," and she said, "This is the future of education. We're going to be increasingly multicultural, and we're going to, you know, feminism is here to stay." So, I said, "If I have a Mexican student whose cultural value is macho, should I try to change his culture to conform to feminism, or should I respect his culture and not force the feminism on him?" And she had no answer for that because what she was holding out for us was contradictory. And I'm going to vote against this resolution because I don't like to trivialize something that's important. My grandson is Rwandan. My daughter-in-law is Hispanic. My nieces are Chinese. I live in Detroit, on the other side of that Eight Mile Barrier, and I have done, raised my four kids there in 20 years. And so, I don't like to see this kind of issue being trivialized. A good example is when a young man from Yemen moved to Dearborn with his bride. The Michigan Family Services Department arrested him because he could not have conjugal relations with his bride because she was too young, according to Michigan law. To reduce issues of diversity to -- and again, this is an insight I got from a U of M class in my master's, where the teacher pointed out that when we talk about cultural diversity, we end up with food and dance, not the real values that animate cultures and that lead to conflicts like we see in Ireland, in Palestine, and in other places. Now, most of the positive things you have here are covered by the Michigan curriculum framework, particularly those in social studies. Other things you have here, should students be represented on local and state school I think this sets a bad precedent because then you are valued for who you represent rather than as who you are as an individual. Several assertions here have our articles of faith and not demonstratable. For example, the diversity success in a global economy. It wasn't by diversity that Toyota overtook GM. So, I think a lot of the assumptions here are things we'd like to believe, but they're questionable, and frankly, I think it's unworthy of our board to even deal with this.
Can I, first of all, I think it's appropriate if, why don't you, if I may, I think it would be more appropriate if you guys go back to the audience, because we can still interact. Right now, this is technically a board discussion. I don't mind you to feel like you have to -- you're welcome. We'll have a time if you feel -- I just didn't want it to become...
I understand.
... the students, and this is a board policy for you to debate and discuss. And, you know, I would say this, you know, I don't know if I should say this, but there may be things the board members say once in a while that make me uncomfortable in the way that I look at things, but I think it's an example of diversity.
Well, yeah.
A thought that we should also be respectful of, you know, and I think it's one of the good parts about this board, is why I mentioned earlier, the R's and D's kind of together almost all the time, at least in the final analysis for the kids. But I think that's one that gets overlooked sometimes. Sometimes the diversity issue is one that we see more than we hear or think about at times. So, I think it's good to have, you know, some different views on this. I think Mary Ann was next, and then I think it was Nancy, and then I think it was back to Dan, and then I think it was... I'll try to remember all of it. Excuse me if I'm a little out of...
Well, I'd just like to say, Richard, I appreciate your comments and your concerns, and I think you make some good points. However, in this situation, we're talking about a basic understanding and a basic appreciation for other people and for their culture. This isn't even calling for appreciation of people's political views. I think we need more of this, more understanding and more concerned for where other people are coming from and, quite frankly, what they're adding to our culture. And I think we always have to look at that. There is one thing I'd like to add here, and that is on this section that says, well, I see...
That's their handout. This is what you're--
Oh, okay. Thank you. That's why there's a tip.
Oh, this is--
On the whereas, on the last whereas, "Diversity learning promotes social well-being among students by helping reduce conflict," I'd like to add bullying in there. So it's, "By helping reduce conflict, bullying, and violence in schools."
Don't want to, short-circuit general comments, but one issue is to appreciate Richard's heartfelt talk. For those of you that want to support a resolution, what other changes might you see as you offer your perspectives? And we managed to scare the young people away. They had to get back for school activities, so no, I'm sure they would have loved to stay and listen more. Who was next? I'm sorry.
I think Cassandra was.
Was it me? Okay.
It is now.
I'm on track.
It is now.
So, I support this. I think that this is a really good idea. I don't think there's anything wrong with us saying that diversity learning is a good thing, you know, and I want to support what Dan said. I grew up in a very rural school, and everyone that I went to school with looked just like me. And then I went to the University of Michigan, and wow, you know, it was like, all of a sudden, I was exposed to all these different cultures, and different religions, and different practices, and I appreciate that I was given that exposure, because I think it was really, really important. When I was in high school, we really didn't have cultural learning. I happened to take Spanish class one year, and so I learned a little bit about Latin culture. That was essentially the extent of it. And I feel for those who, unlike myself, didn't really get to experience all these unique cultures and peoples, and folks from all different walks of life, because it certainly opened up my horizons, and I think it's good, and I don't think there's, I don't see a drawback of us simply saying that learning about other people is a good thing. And I also, you know, I totally respect what you said, Richard, but I do want to take issue with confusing culture with feminism, because they're not the same thing. Feminism, in my mind, is not a culture. It's different, you know.
We didn't have a choice at birth.
Right. Yeah. So, you know, with that aside, though, I think it's a positive thing for us, just to simply say, we appreciate the fact that there are different people in this world, and that there are young people who want to learn about them. It's good.
May I point a clarification, because a number of you, at the same moment, were doing what I did also, so the discussion could be anything you want, but the discussion is on the point that's on your computer, not on what the kids handed us. So it wouldn't be--
Yes.
It wouldn't be, for instance, resolving that the kids should give a diverse presentation on school boards, for example, that's on their sheet, not on yours. Just to clarify, I think it was, I think it went right down the line, as a matter of fact.
I think so, but I can go with anything you want.
Please, go ahead.
Okay. First, a comment, and then a question. The comment is that, like Cassandra, I grew up in a diverse population, too, when I was in middle school. I moved from about the biggest WASP community, in a farm community, very small community in Iowa, and suddenly found myself, one September, in Detroit Lakes, Minnesota, where I was about the only dark-haired Caucasian there. It was totally Finns, Swedes, Norwegians, and African, I mean, not African, I mean, Native Americans. The Scandinavian population, in many cases, was first or second generation, and it was amazing, as an outsider, to observe the lack of diversity tolerance between Native Americans and these first and second-generation Americans. And it became very clear to me at a very young age, that tolerance was something that didn't just automatically happen, but it had to be worked at, and that I found myself in a number of situations that I never could have imagined 10 weeks before, coming from Iowa, not because we had such a perfect population, because I was so isolated in a culture there, that I didn't know anything else, which was another kind of intolerance, but not intentional. I mean, it wasn't like we all decided that nobody else could come in, it's just the way it was. And then you move to a community that there was constant cultural strife, and as a new person coming in, and as a middle schooler that, they called it junior high then, as a junior high kid coming in, you were just kind of like, "Whoa, whoa, what's going on here?" You know, I heard words and sayings and things and epithets, and I'd never heard before in my life. So I think that's, the idea of tolerance, which is what I think we're really talking about here, and maybe that's part of the question that we might have in the way we look at this, and acceptance, tolerance and acceptance, I guess I should add that word, too. Yeah, but you certainly have to tolerate first, in order to learn to accept. If you don't even tolerate it to begin with, you're not even going to ask about acceptance. So my question is to you, Richard, if you were to recognize, I'm not saying you should, I'm just saying, if you were to recognize the value in our society valuing tolerance, acceptance, and people from all over, how would you write this? How would you approach this? What is it you would do, not what you're not going to vote for?
Well, here's a good example of cultural differences. In Malaya, the cultural difference is that you take it easy, you spend a lot of time relaxing and socializing, and so on and so forth. The Chinese that came into Malaya are very much work-oriented. Over a generation or two, the Chinese have become the makers and the professionals, the Malayans have become the lower classes, and you have a lot of cultural violence between Malayans and Chinese, motivated in great part by envy and cultural, or I should say, class warfare. Okay? So, we, too, are struggling with, as Thomas Sowell indicates, we're struggling with the economic differences that arise from cultural differences among us. So, I think we should be clear as to what cultural values, hard work, achievement, excellence, whatever it is we're concerned with, what are the cultures we want to dominate our school communities? I think they ought to be, the cultural values that dominate our school communities ought to be, ought to include mutual respect, should include honesty, should include praising hard work, and I think there are a number of others that are already implicit in the Michigan curriculum framework, particularly the social studies, which, to my mind, makes resolutions like this either redundant, and the more policies you adopt, the less likely anyone is going to be listened to, okay? Or else it's saying something more, that people are more significant because of who they represent, rather than their individual character.
Okay, so, I'm going to try and weed through everything you just said to get at the question I asked. So, in your mind, none of this has any value, other than to say that it is either redundant within our current curriculum framework, or that we don't really mean that we want to be, we want to accept everyone, because, in fact, because of our work ethic, we don't accept everyone.
Exactly.
Okay, I wanted to make sure I understood that. So you don't think there's any hope for this?
No, no.
Oh, okay, just checking, I wanted to make sure.
As I said before, the feel-good, the feel-good makes us feel good, because it helps us forget uncomfortable choices or realities.
Then Kathy, then Matenga, and then Dan.
This is a really interesting discussion, and I think Richard brought up some very interesting interpretations and ideas to consider, but I don't consider this resolution trivializing the issue. I think it affirms that we want to recognize that there are differences, and that we want people to understand that there are differences. Doesn't mean that the other people are correct, it just means that we understand that there are differences, and that we try to get beyond tolerance and get to acceptance. Maybe, it used to be that immigrants came to this country, and there were a lot of differences, there were a lot of different cultures, but most of them tried to adapt to the existing American culture, if you want to call it that. But nowadays, times are different, and people want to retain their own identity, their own cultures that they've come with. And if we, if we look at this as a positive, which I think we should, that we learn from each other, and we, each culture adds to the other, and we build a better society. And that's what I think we're trying to say here. Maybe it's not exactly the best wording, but it does say that, I think. I've been on the board of the Michigan Roundtable for a long time, and when it was the Detroit Roundtable of interfaith, I forget the name of it, it was interfaith in those days. Now it's beyond interfaith to interracial and intercultural, and we've been working in various communities, and there's a lot of ignorance in many communities, and people do feel threatened, as new people move into their communities that they didn't know before. And there's a lot of education that has to be done, and it's very good, I think, to start in schools, and help children, help their parents understand the differences, and how to work with each other, and how to understand each other, and be aware of each other. I think this is, so I would support this resolution. And if you want to put a more, a little more definition of what we mean by diversity learning, we can do that, but I think most people have an understanding of what we're talking about.
And Matenga, Dan, Mike, and then we've all spoken, unless someone else wants to go back in. We can do that. Okay, Nancy, and then--
Maybe, I'll see what they have to say.
If I may, you know, I'm a social studies teacher, and so I'm aware of the policy of diversity learning in the classroom, and I can tell you that's positively lacking, and this is what these children are trying to address, is the fact that, for example, in my social studies, in my history book, there's one paragraph about Iraq, you know, and it's positively lacking, it's not up with the times, because of the globalization environment that the technology provides, the students are speaking to Koreans, they're speaking to all these people. And I can tell you this much, in my geography class, which I ended up turning into a human geography class, there was not just food and dance. I mean, they were, we had comparative economic systems, comparative cultures, comparative religions and philosophy, comparative societies and government, and those are classes that do not exist, unless it's some kind of afterthought. And what these children are asking is for a class that has those kind of academic, addresses diversity in an academic way, rather than just in the food and dance. So diversity, what they're trying to address is not just cultural, the stereotypical cultural costumes and what have you, they're asking for more dialogue, and more conversations in an academic setting, to give it more legitimacy. So if you can consider that, and especially the fact that the diversity requirements are just not enough, they're taught sometimes by people who've never left the country, who've never had access to other groups, and so they're strictly teaching from a book, and rather than from, you know, an experience. So, you know, voting for this would address the issue that the standards are lacking and need to be expanded, to meet the 21st century needs of the children.
Thank you, Matenga. Dan?
So I will, I will admit that this has become a fairly difficult conversation for me, just because it's a personal conversation for me, as an African-American. I think there are three points that I want to make. The first is that I, so I would echo Matenga's point, what I heard the young lady who presented to us say was that she was requesting that this not be trivialized, that we do more than read about other cultures, but actually have real conversation about the diversity of cultures that present in our society today. I'm at a loss, just at an absolute loss, to understand how that request and our agreement to it could possibly trivialize the issue of diversity and race in America, one. Two, so this isn't about individual credibility, and our individual actions at this stage of the game. Certainly it is, in the end, right? It's always about what you do as an individual, how you act and behave in the world. But truly, at this table, what this is about is what position we would take, if any, about institutions that have contributed to the creation of the society in which we live, right? I mean, so that eight-mile barrier, if you will, which I also live south of, is not a, it's not an accident, right? It is a construct, that's the result of decisions that people have made, which are the result of ways that they have been taught, and ways that they have been. And I would venture to say that our schools play a huge role in teaching folks how to be. And to have the opportunity to influence the way that those institutions behave with regard to this issue, and to not act on it, is akin to contributing to the creation of an eight-mile barrier. I just, I don't see any way around that. We have the ability to influence the behavior of many institutions in this state, for, and I guess I would challenge, Richard, you in particular, but I don't want to personalize it, anybody who feels like this doesn't get it, to do better, like, so let's actually take it on, then, and fix it, right? Because it's clear that those institutions generate racially predictable outcomes, I don't care where you sit, it's obvious when you look at the data, and we have, we have an obligation and opportunity to do something about that. Certainly, we can all agree on that. Third is, I guess the, I just, this is not nearly as important, I suppose, on the other hand, it probably is. So to go, the contrast that was presented a moment ago on public testimony, right? We had public testimony that used a term of war to describe immigration, right? Contrasted with what followed, I think is exactly what we're dealing with right now. And we can decide to contribute, to continue to promote institutional behavior that results in public testimony that describes immigration through terms of war, or we can promote the behavior of institutions that would allow for a much richer, better discourse, right? Non-inflammatory, real discourse about diversity, about different cultures, about immigration, or whatever the subject of the day is. And that's what this is about fundamentally.
Thank you. Other comments? Nancy, John?
To add to that, something geographically closer to this building. In the late 50s, early 60s, in East Lansing, along Lake Lansing Road, there was a wall built up in White Hills, between White Hills and Tower Gardens. Tower Gardens was not an African-American community, or a Hispanic community, it was a low, low socioeconomic community. The people in White Hills were of a higher socioeconomic community. They did not want their children crossing Lake Lansing to go to Tower Gardens. A wall was built. It's still there today. Excuse me. I can remember, as a child in school there, in high school, went from Minnesota to there, moved a lot, excuse me, there were many parents who didn't want their kids going across Lake Lansing. I knew we'd turn the corner when I sat on the East Lansing School Board, and the families of White Hills came to protest that there was no crossing guard or crossing light for the children of Tower Gardens to come to White Hills Elementary School across the street. Prior to that, that it didn't seem to be important. And we finally got that, but it came because of the leadership of the principal there. It came because the principal there realized that there was a cultural disconnect that was harming children in the way they looked at the world. was harming children in the way they looked at the world. And she was determined to do something. And so she organized that. And she didn't just go to Tower Gardens to ask the parents there to come to speak before city council and the school board to get that done. I'm so sorry, hold on, just a second. But she came to the people of the community that lived in White Hills. And she said, what are you going to do about this? And she was able to get them to come together and understand each other's cultural differences. And by understanding and accepting them, that doesn't mean you adopt them. It doesn't mean that just because you have a different culture in Malaya than the one that you want to promote here, that because you've accepted the diversity of that Malaysian country, you adopt it. It means that you accept it. And I think that there's something, we have to be very careful here about what we're looking at, about, I could reiterate everything Dan said, I don't think that's necessary. But I think we need to think about what it means to our children to understand that we all live together and we all work together and we all are going to sink or survive together. And so it's important to have that acceptance, knowledge, good discourse. You don't have to agree with everything. I mean, if we have nothing else at this board level, I think we do have good discourse. That's positive. I think we need to have our children have that same benefit. And I think that through our children, we may actually touch adults that haven't been touched before. I'm a firm believer in that. So I am going to vote for this. And it may be that it's not quite as strong and gritty as it needs to be. But just because we accept this doesn't mean that we can't change it in the future. But I don't want to build any more walls. I want to have those all gone, even if it's, even if geographically they're still there. In reality, the sense that they're, they're gone. And so I, I'm valuing this.
John, please.
In the spirit of what's been offered, I was going to move approval of the resolution with Mary Ann's strategic insertion of the word "bullying." That's noted.
Second that.
Support. Any further discussion?
Well, I was just going to say, there's a wall in Detroit, too, that I was shocked to find when I moved there. I didn't even know it was there the first couple of years I was there, but then I found out it was so that the children north of it couldn't go to the school. Just south of it, they were bussed into the inner city because they were of a different color than the children who lived just south of the wall. It was unbelievable to me, but there it was, it's still there.
Yep.
So we have a lot to learn and the quicker we can try to teach our children.
Or, in this case, they're teaching us.
They're teaching us. That's what I said, the children.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
The children can help teach their parents as well. That's what you're saying, touch the adults, so on.
Now, before I call a question, I mean, I very rarely, I try not to get too much into this, but I would, first of all, I'm just proud of these kids. And I think there can be diversity of thinking about this that we can, that we can listen to each other about. But I'm also, I mean, I was the superintendent there when they were preschoolers. And I just want to give a shout out to a guy named Bill Kastig.
Sure they were born?
No, I'm sorry. They were born. I figured this out in my head, they were barely born. But Bill Kastig was the city manager in Farmington Hills, and we represented three cities in the school district. And it was easy for me because we were, it was a very tough time. The district was changing. It had been Quaker Town, not historically. And about 25% African American, almost overnight, large Arab American population, see some diversity represented. And easy for me because the board was very much, we were all together on, we've got to at least start with something citywide between the cities, not just the school district. Easy for me, hard for Bill to stand up to a council that was not there. And we had a press conference and called for a multicultural, multiracial council that they needed to apply. And I mean, it was just partly to get the ball rolling. And I mean, he put himself in jeopardy of being fired and not only didn't, subsequently they named the administration building after him. So I think they realized he was bringing leadership. So I want to give a shout out to him. And then one other thing is, I hope, I mean, this has always been a little easier for me. I grew up in Brooklyn, New York. I didn't know till I'd come visit my grandmother here in Lansing that all neighborhoods weren't just totally diverse. It never occurred to me. Although I did experience a French Protestant side of the family and an Irish Catholic side of the family, that when I was born, they total, or my brother, I'm the oldest of them, my parents were married, they totally moved away from my parents. You know, you're not welcome, neither side. And that was nothing compared to what other histories have gone through, particularly folks of color. But I'm just saying, even in that, you know, you look back and think, French Protestant, I mean, Europeans, Christians, you know, and they're all, we're not going to see you again. And they literally had that way for a couple of years, apparently, until I was born. Of course, that changed everything. But, you know, the thing I hopefully would also do as you vote today is, I do think this has to translate to action, too. And I'll give you an example. I don't mind on it. It got written about recently, and I defended the governor on this because there's been a lot about opening the public school borders. I don't mind saying, I pushed that hard. I don't get how we say we're public schools and you can decide to not let some kids come into your district. And I do know there's, it's a little more complex than that, but trust me, I've done this too long. A lot of districts do not allow that because of diversity issues, period. And, and I think this puts that to rest. It creates some other potential issues, but I, as an example, I think that's something I hope in the forums, if, you know, if you end up choosing to have them, that people will hear the benefits of some of that as opposed to their anxieties about that. I think, you know, I don't, I don't know why we're not outraged really by, without having, I'll just tell you my own piece. You know, I feel defensive with the field more in this job than I ever have because if you speak about anything that isn't positive, there's a feeling you're against teachers or against superintendent, we should be outraged by the system we've created, particularly around poor kids who are largely African American in this state. And the numbers that we're trying to reflect is not to make people feel bad and not to demoralize, it's just to say, we have this tremendous problem. And it's a diversity problem in many respects, it's socioeconomic, I mean, there are poor rural areas, but in large part, this is, it's just like, if you stepped away and came back, you wouldn't believe that we could actually have really these systems with such different results. And you're pretty much ordained to a certain result if you're in a certain socioeconomic status with certain non-supports and the rest. So I mean, I hope, I really appreciate the dialogue, first of all, and I hope that we push this the next step and defend actions related to this, too. And that's what would make the policy meaningful, I think.
I just wanted to add that, I got introduced to the Roundtable forty years ago, maybe, because they ran conferences called Rearing Children of Good Will. And I was asked to participate in workshops and stuff. They've been doing that for years and having various labor camps for children to learn, to meet other children from different backgrounds. And those kinds of programs are really valuable. And I think we have to do something to encourage implementation of programs that, I don't know if that should be, school boards implement policies and promote diversity learning. If we can make that a little bit stronger and say, implement programs and policies and programs for courses or something that promote diversity learning, maybe conferences or whatever.
I don't know if you want to do programs, but you certainly could.
There was a motion on the floor, but I guess we can be informal here.
I'm sorry, you're right, there's a motion.
No, that's fine.
I know we're being a little more informal than we usually are with this, but.
About policies and practices.
It's practices.
About policies and practices.
Practices, no.
I would, I would welcome that amendment to my motion.
Support was, I'm sorry, it's Kathy. With that amendment?
If I can make just one more that authors, you know. I grew up about an hour away from the city of Seville. And Seville, for about 200 years, Jews, Muslims, and Christians lived in harmony. And because of that harmony, that city is just beautiful with architecture and academic achievement, and it's just a gorgeous soup. And the idea of diversity learning in some communities has become the assertion that you're going to then accept the counterproductive behavior. So, no, I would not accept somebody who is an anti-feminist because you're taking away human rights, you know? So I'm not going to tolerate or not accept behavior that is against human rights or against the laws of the United States. So diversity learning does not mean the negative, you know, adopting the things that do not make a community progress. But when you marry cultures together and let, and just get the positive, it's just a phenomenal miracle that happens. And not providing an academic realm for the students to learn that quality is really counterproductive.
Okay. Good. Call a question? Go on, favor I?
Aye.
Bo is same?
Aye.
Thank you. Good discussion, and I think these are worth having, you know? I think you can, it's difficult to talk about issues like this, and the more we can, I think we model it for other folks on differences that can be expressed. Okay, we're going to go back to, let's see, we're going back to John's report.
Do we need to, is it approving the minutes first, or?
No, we did that even though we had a little.
Did we do that already? I didn't realize it.
Bargain on the side.
Sorry.
I just wanted to say, thanks, Richard, for helping to interview Teacher of the Year. And, Mary Ann, you were eager to join the committee, the school health committee, that Kathy, you came to the meeting.
Oh, right, right.
Unless there's objection, I'd ask you to do that. And if there's nothing else, I hope that we decide the business we're doing. Thank you.
I think I'll just pass on, I think I'll just pass on mine.
Anything else you want to say, Dylan? I mean, I don't want to, don't discourage you, anything.
No, I think I'm good, John. I'll just wait on some of this, a little more, forty. Matenga, Teacher of the Year.
Okay. I usually don't revert to my written report when I do the oral report. This is once a month. But I'm, and I just wanted to report that I, you know, I wanted to, I just got back from DC and I had a great experience there, but again, I don't want to squander the time with you guys to speak about an issue, again, from the voice of my students as well. Wednesday, April, the last week of April, there was a collaborative venture between students of Doot High School and students of Grand Edge High School that put together this evening. It was this phenomenal platform that they invented, you know, the idea of using the arts as they were meant to be, using theater as they were meant to be, in a sense, to be, you know, give community information as well as food for thought. And they also, then after they presented this play, or this series of skits, they had a forum and they invited members of the community. And it was just so important what these kids did, just like these students here. And it's so important for us to understand the voices, that they're, like, the fact that they're willing to come out of the stereotype of, oh, yeah, kids don't produce much, they're just liabilities and not assets, to reach out and communicate what they want to say. And so I wanted to just quickly underline the idea of failure. A lot of the students, my students during discussion time, are reporting this idea that, you know, you know, and like I said in the article, you know, it's not that they're apathetic about their, about their academics, it's not that things are boring for them, but it's, they feel like they're pushing a wall in the sense that there's, the safety net is so complete that there's really no place for failure. And so we've created in the past couple of decades that I've been teaching this net that students now in ninth grade, they don't feel like they have to try. You have to work so much harder to make them to try because they know that they can't fail, or somebody's going to do something. I had a student recently who was confused about why he was failing the class, you know? Why am I failing this class? You know, I said, you know, your grades look like a rosary, look at all them zeros, you know? And so he was just like, you know, shouldn't you give me something? I come to class every day. Shouldn't I get some kind of something? You know, and that idea that, you know, there is some kind of credit for doing nothing. We've installed in our children, you know, ribbons, everybody gets the ribbons and the trophies. And I wanted to challenge the board in your venture, because this is like my last time that I actually get to speak to you guys. I want to, to challenge the board to consider, to reconsider the idea of introducing failure as not, or redefining failure as not a character flaw. But, you know, a huge creative outlet, you know? You know, I did not, none of us here in this room became who we are without making mistakes. But we're not allowing our children to make mistakes. In fact, their mistakes are published as failures in all kinds of charts and in all kinds of media outlets. And I would want to challenge the board and speak from their hearts because when they hear those statistics, when they hear those, that's them that you're talking about. They're people behind those percentages that are somehow garnished in a very one-sided way, and the whole story is not told. And the whole story is not told because if they push the wrong answer, if they double in the wrong answer, there's no way of going back and learning that concept or creating from that concept. And so I would like to just promote this idea that it's not just easier to teach a child who is not afraid of, failure means another way, and at another time that he can try it, but it's also, you know, a great way to teach them critical thinking, a great way to teach them all the 21st century skills that we're looking for. I have a couple notes. When I look at my, you know, for ten years, I've been working on this blended learning. And so what you saw today was years and years and years of fantastic, phenomenal failure. There were days that I wanted to cry for, I just wanted to just jump off something and just end it because I thought, I have a good idea, but it wasn't working. And like I mentioned in my article, when I started really understanding that, you know, and focusing on how wrong I was, is that's when I started opening the window to true creativity and true innovation. Because I wasn't so caught up in, oh, but if you just try this and just do it my way, you'll know what I mean. Instead, I was looking at it like, you know, I'm probably wrong about this. And because of my attitude, I was able to open up to other stuff. And it's at the service that we're doing to our students by constantly reassuring those safety nets and not allowing them to just repeat and rinse and repeat and rinse and repeat over and over again. So this is my report from my students' heart, and I hope that was informational. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I didn't think anybody could top Rob Stevenson Teacher of the Year, but I think Matenga has the sword. It's so great having her.
Oh, thank you so much.
She's learned so much from.
Rob's saying, when I, you know, he did this whole thing, I have an interpretive dance prepared. No, I don't do any.
He had everybody dancing, I don't know. You taught us a lot.
Thank you.
It's just great.
I am going to go back to one of mine, speaking of teaching us a lot. I'd like to offer to you at another time, I haven't thought this through enough yet, but one of the things I think about when you were talking about your listening opportunities at a forum and people coming in and public participation is, you don't get to see the staff I work with that are just filled with expertise and smarts and somehow, I don't know how to do this without bogging down the meeting, but it's almost like, I feel like at times I want to go, you know, Sally, jump in and Deb, what do you think about, not just on the agenda items, but on even some of the general discussion that comes up. And I think we'd all benefit from it, but I know it's managing a meeting and I don't know how exactly to do that. It's more like when there's some of these open dialogue parts, there's really some tremendous expertise here at empty.
Maybe we should chat with them.
Chat, oh, yeah.
Shadow them.
I mean, when you're having an important discussion or, I don't know, I've got to think more about this. I wanted to open the door to Dan.
I would just, so I would take you up on your offer. I can't speak for everybody, but I'd love to hear the input of subject matter experts and folks who have great experience on the subject as appropriate.
Yeah, because I mean, we can plan an agenda and do that, you know, a most common one would be, not common, it's a very one would be, not common, it's a very uncommon person, but Joseph, because of the nature of the work is here, and you can see the expertise, I think there's some you don't, but even on the discussion we had, I think there's been some really deep experiences on diversity sitting right behind us, but it doesn't really, it doesn't really allow itself to easily, I guess I can as chair, but I'll think more about that and then bring something back, because I think we're missing a piece here that could be helpful.
There's so many people on the staff that we don't know.
Well, you know, by the way, everyone, not just new board members, are invited on that 9:30 on the retreat day where, since, on the 24th, where you'll, in this room, there'll be, each director's going to speak for four minutes, and then some opportunity to put names and faces together. So, I mean, as you know, that everyone's invited, even though it was specifically designed for new board members, and then we're going to head into the retreat, I think at 10:30, Mertz? So, that might be, you know, kind of a way to get at some of that, Kath, if you'd like to.
Because we meet the directors, but we don't meet the other folks.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that's true. I was actually, that's true.
Right.
Not sure how deep we're going there.
Along with what you're saying, I'd like to add that the time Joseph and Vanessa took the other day to spend with us going over assessments was just incredibly helpful and generous on your part to take that time.
Thank you for saying that. And I'm not just saying this, I don't have to say, it's all over the place, you just can't believe the level. And then with the extra burden, really, it is a burden of the cuts and what's piled onto smaller numbers of people, smiling faces, pretty much positive all the time, and there's a way, I'll think more about how to do that, maybe I'll bring, at the retreat, I'll try to bring maybe a little bit of a thought about how to do that. Maybe for now, it would be, in the spirit of what we were just talking about, maybe I could have, on the diversity example, just saying, you know, I might have opened that up a little bit more to make people feel comfortable to say something there, too. That would be a minimal, a minimal way to do it, but, okay, we're to, we're back. John, this is your baby here, the resolution on Governor Snyder's education method, it looked pretty good this morning.
So, I think, Marilyn, do you have another revised copy? So, based on this morning's discussion made, just a few changes, which I'll point out. In the first paragraph, it's Andrew's wordsmithing on outreach to and welcoming of. In one of the bullets under the teacher section, the word revising on the third bullet was...
Why don't we wait until everybody gets this, so we can all look at it at the same time?
So, the changes that were made include, in the first paragraph, outreach to, welcoming of. In the third bullet of the small bullets under the teacher section, so word change, revising, and the last paragraph, there's an effort to try to say what we were trying to say about a stronger statement, Nancy, commit to fulfilling our constitutional responsibility to lead education policy and fully implement the education improvement agenda in these and other areas where we find common ground. It was an effort to try to say what we were trying to say.
Except you didn't use the word leadership.
To lead education.
Lead.
To lead.
Instead of fulfilling, well, yeah, to, oh, I see where you're saying, okay. Never, I just, I missed it, so thank you for pointing it out where it was.
Okay.
What's the third bullet change? I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch that.
The word replacing was revised to revising.
First word? Oh, oh, okay, got it.
Which I think is strong enough for...
Yep, yep, no, I agree, yep.
Cole?
I'll move support to this resolution.
Moved by John, it was supported by Richard. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same? Thank you.
Could we do the forum one, two, please?
Okay.
What I would propose on the forums is that I ask for support of the proposed forums as described with these sort of clarifications of the expectations. One, that we maybe name until 6:30 to provide space for people who might want to come after work, that we have license to develop the Detroit one as soon as possible, that we would, if approved, we would be asking minimal, but this would be a formal state board sanction activity, and we would be inviting, sending notice of the forums to pre-K, K, and higher ed, with the emphasis on K being the target audience. And what I would propose in terms of just the general outline for the format would be a five to 10-minute, state board members who are in attendance, depending on how many, opportunity to share what we've done, what we're doing, and what our recommendations are, basically what we've agreed on in terms of what we've done, what we're doing, what our recommendations are, and we could prepare a short two or three slides to capture that. That we would be inviting for 30 minutes, give or take, three or four invited presentations on encouraging, focusing on innovation and meeting challenges from entities such as our host school district, the ISD, if our community college or university host had a program related to K-12 learning or teacher preparation that they wanted to show off, and an innovative policy or program like virtual learning or something else that we would want to feature. And I welcome any and all suggestions on what we might invite from board members, staff, you know, beating the odds schools, Mount Pleasant has one, Grand Rapids area, might be a good time to invite that. So, we invite three or four, and then the balance of the 90 minutes would be organized public participation for the audience. That would be my proposal.
I would just make one suggestion, and that is to stretch it to seven, maybe start it at 4:30, but I think we need to allow for people traveling, people coming home from work, that sort of thing. I think 6:30 would...
Open to, or to seven, if our hosts are, which I trust they would be.
Yeah, I would agree with Mary Ann. I think opening it until seven is helpful, allow people to get there after work, maybe make a raises for their children before they get there, or, you know.
Any?
Did we add a, did we add one in Detroit?
He said we were going to, they don't have one yet.
Okay, but you planned to add one in Detroit.
We would be, if approved, you'd give us license to develop a Detroit one.
I have a space.
Along the same contour.
Good.
Mike, I know that this is a decision of the board, but I guess I would, I would really invite thoughts on your part in terms of how this could be helpful to you, to your staff, or what else we should or shouldn't do in terms of making this helpful.
Now, I know what you meant by signaling me a moment ago.
Yeah, I was trying to get you...
Well, you know, honestly, I think, I think we have talked about, and I'm not going to say we haven't, we've obviously talked about it, and we have, I don't know that I call a concern, I think I said to everyone, let's just let it play out. I mean, it could very well be a positive thing, and besides, these are statewide elected folks and all that. I would sense that you're inviting, I would have said this probably after the vote, but I, you know, I'm, we're a little cautious, because, you know, the worry isn't what you intend and what you've described today. I don't, I can't dispute anything that was said today. I think that if it happens that way, this would just be a, great for the board, great for the department. And so, I think you just let it play out, and that's what I kind of meant earlier when I was saying, maybe we see how this evolves. You may come out of that meeting, and if, I appreciate your asking me, because, you know, I won't be there, but I could picture if something came from that that we thought had an impact on us, I'd like to be able to express that, you know, and then maybe it would evolve a little bit in terms of how you might do a second one or a second series, you know, it might be just, it's probably going to be fine. I mean, I think the spirit behind the listening tour, there's always a concern that, this is what I learned a little bit, why I have a student cabinet being put together, I think I'm meeting with them next week or so, and an educator one, is the people who choose to come out are not the same as the general population, but we all know that. So, I mean, there's nothing wrong with that, that's one way to get feedback, and then another way is to get it as spontaneously as you can. You know, I often on these, the reason I mention these visits is, I mean, I always get, what kids do you think they have greeting you at the door? You know, it's not me, the way I was as a middle school kid, it's, so I try to break off and walk into a cafeteria and often, well, you know, we only have three minutes, and it's not malicious, I mean, people are really trying to give you a good sense, you've been on, many of you have done these yourself. But I, it's one reason I was cautious, I think this may also satisfy some of the feeling that has been expressed here once in a while, like Kathy did today, that you're in the field, it's kind of, that part I like as a nice compromise to not trying to move the board meetings to the field, because I just don't know how we would make it work. But I think I get the part about being in the field, so you can hear people and you can understand. And then just, as I just said, I mean, you know that that's one form of listening, and then others are going to be people you run into in your street, your neighbors, your people who choose to write you. I do think what I'm trying to get, and I'll share my experience with you, too, what I'm trying to get with this kind of random packaging of kids in a, in a room is, is the voice that may not go out of its way to be heard, you know. It takes a certain proactivity to want to even go to one of these things. So, by definition, you're segmenting, and it's why you may be inviting a little more of the, you know, the caution that you've had with each other about the negativity, you might be inviting a little more of that, but you know what, I think that's honorable on your part, that you're going to hear, if you hear some of that, you hear some of that, you know, I mean, you're hearing it anyway, probably, so, so I appreciate the, and I, what we, when we talked about, I said, I think we ought to let it play out, it could very well be a very positive thing, I certainly know the intentions are all honorable and positive, and if, as long as I'm allowed, that's what you're kind of saying, to at least give some feedback, if we thought there was something from that that was impacting, I doubt there will be.
More than that, Mike, I mean, those of us, obviously, who encourage this, think it's, for all the reasons that we discussed today, important to provide venues and forums to have the dialogue with our constituency, but also to support, ultimately to support and reinforce the kind of changes and improvement that we care about, the board and department. And so, it's mainly respecting staff capacity, but to the degree that you and the department want to not only participate, but share and help co-plot on these events, all for it, you know, to make them as effective and useful as possible. It's sensing that if we do these, it would be helpful to not insist on a lot of co-plotting, but the door is wide open.
We don't want to plan at all, we want to plan, but...
I mean that sincerely, so there's ways we can conspire, is not the right word either, but, you know.
We're not going to plan, we're not going to respond.
Make things most purposely useful, to meet both, I mean, Dan has always put it the best in terms of the goal of these and doing our job, which is to listen and lead.
Yeah. No, I do feel comfortable, thanks for clarifying that, John, but also feel comfortable with what you've described to do, and I think it's going to be good. And if we had some feedback, based on indirect feedback, you know, that we would just share it, but, see, it's a little bit, I guess I would liken it, you have to run into this every day yourself, but I would liken it to when I'm on these visits, I take about 50% of it with a grain of salt, because they know who they're talking to, and some of it's going to be, you know, I don't know if you knew that Marty did so-and-so and blah, 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 which, of course, right away, I take that one to heart, I know that's very good. But, you know, I, I don't think that's what you're going to have, I think you're going to have, I think you are going to have opportunities, good example with what Mary Ann brought up, the depth that you have of this understanding now of accreditation, there's a very good chance that people who have concerns about that are going to express it in some way, and you're going to also be able to help educate about why this isn't what some people have made it out to be. You're also going to hear some things that maybe do prompt you to want to amend the thinking about it a bit, which would be fine, too. I don't really, I'm very comfortable with the discussion that happened today, we purposely said, let's see how the discussion goes today, and we didn't know exactly what you were going to cook up, but it sounds good. So, I...
No, we were going to plan, yes.
Okay? Yes. Is this a vote kind of thing, Dan?
Could I offer one?
I think there's a motion on...
Yeah, there is, that's right. Go ahead, Dan.
I would ask, then, that what we do when we, I don't know, maybe it's appropriate before or after the vote, I'm not sure, but I would ask that what you, you read from your notes, John, that you put in writing and send out to everyone, not just the board, but to Mike and staff as well, so that people could refer to that, because I think it's important that we keep those communications with the department clear, so that they can respond as, if they need to, if people ask about them about it, they can say, well, here's what their plan is. Is that something?
Absolutely, and it should also figure out how to reflect that in the resolution, right, and in any notification. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same? Good. And then we'll hit the button on something, whatever that is, because we're always comfortable with a board thing, and then we're going to probably the retreat or something, we'll talk a little bit about some of the other nuanced issues, but, right, so we'll, for now, we won't, do you want to have a placeholder for Detroit, or wait a day or so to see if you can get a date and a place, or do you want us to put out what you have so far?
I mean, my sense, the news from the board today was probably the governor's message, so maybe we could just prepare, well, see, I don't think we'll be ready with a Detroit place, but we could prepare a notice for maybe tomorrow.
We could get it soon.
Okay.
Is that, is that my sense, but I'm just sharing that in the interest of full disclosure.
Stretching the time, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, John, yeah. Why do you look for that? Cool. Okay, Lisa.
And the tome.
Yeah. That's nothing going on, right?
Not much. Just a regular old day in Lanning.
Well, that means it was exciting, then.
She said tongue-in-cheek, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
So, just a couple of updates from what you have in writing, just a couple. The state budget is moving very rapidly, I think that they will have everything in conference committee probably next week. The big issue in the department budget, of course, is that when we were asked to make cuts, you know, the budget office comes to us at the beginning of the year and says, okay, you need to find X amount of dollars worth of cuts. This, the cut, as you know, was the reform office and to repeal the reform district and reform office, and the legislature has decided they really like the reforms that we passed and really don't want us to get rid of that. So, the House found money elsewhere and restored the reform office and the funding for the staff to do all of those reforms that we've passed previously. The Senate...
Where'd they find the money?
You know, I don't know where they found it.
Wasn't, wasn't part of our...
In the mattress.
Wait for the, wait for the second shooter.
The Senate found it...
This is important.
...in other places in the budget. They randomly took funding from different offices within the department budget to fund the 1.4 million of the reform office.
So, Lisa, we appreciate your service, and I think you...
Clearly, I'm not doing my job well enough.
No, no, I didn't mean, I meant that's where they arbitrarily...
Yeah, right, right.
They were tired of hearing from you.
Yeah, no kidding.
This is what I meant earlier by panicking and writing the chief of staff and the budget director, but I, I mean, we're, you know, it's, it's concerning, this could end up where that gets back in, and we have to find the 1.4 million, and even though it looks like we have a large building here, most of it's not us, and then most of it's federal, so 1.4 million is like, pretty much everything is left.
Right.
I don't even know what they're...
So, as Mike mentioned, he reached out to the governor's office, the chief of staff, and so we're hoping the budget office, because now we're at the point in negotiations where it'll be, you know, the House leadership, the Senate leadership, and the governor's office sort of haggling through some of the final details, and we're hoping that the one arm of that, the governor's office, budget office, is haggling on behalf of us and trying to get this funding put back in, especially in light of all of the things in the governor's message of a week ago, and then he just sent out an email to all of state employees reminding us how he's asked the department and the state board to do many of these things and start implementing them immediately, which to me said immediately, okay, that was the word I underlined in that, but, okay, we definitely can't have these cuts, then.
And, you know, as always, any, especially on the Senate side now, any senators that you may have a relationship with where you could put in a good word, would be appreciated. you may have a relationship with where you could put in a good word would be appreciated, particularly the ones, maybe we could send the board the key senator, and any help to make that case about how do we do the new reforms, not to mention even exist, if we didn't, if we took that second hit.
It's 1.4 billion, did you say?
Million.
I don't mean billion, I mean million.
Yeah.
1.4 million.
I mean, most of our budget is federal, as you know, so that doesn't get touched, but, well, that's going down, too, for a whole other set of reasons.
In addition to that, tenure is the big topic in both the House Education and, previously in the Senate Education Committee. The Senate took up a bill last week that gets at that last-in, first-out concept, the seniority piece, they want it, they want that to go away. They want it to be based on need, on qualifications, and effectiveness of the teacher as opposed to the last-in, first-out. That bill that they took up in the Senate was actually geared at one particular school's issue, but the chair made it clear that he's using that as an opportunity to begin the discussion, and then they plan on expanding that probably statewide. Senate Education this week is taking up two completely non-related to tenure bills, having to do with moving the kindergarten age from the December 1st date to September 1st. This comes up every couple of years, the debate back and forth of whether the kids should be age five by December 1st or by September 1st, so that's up tomorrow in Senate Education Committee. The House, in my report, I talked about several bills related to tenure for the House. They've now introduced four new ones that I think are on the system as of today. They weren't yesterday, and we do have staff working on getting analyses that I'll send to you as soon as we have them done. The four bills have to do with also the focus on teacher effectiveness. It takes some of the governor's concepts and some of the pieces that the governor talked about in his education message on tenure, and some of the issues that the House Republicans have brought up before. It focuses on teacher effectiveness and removing time as a factor for decisions when it comes to time in terms of seniority, when it comes to staff reductions or recalls after a reduction, and saying that it shouldn't be seniority that you're basing those on, but teacher effectiveness. The bills try to align, if you remember last year, a new teacher evaluation system was put in, but it was separate, a whole entirely different evaluation system than the evaluation system under tenure, and in the bills, they're going to try to make that all one system, so it's not two different evaluation systems out there for two different purposes, but having one teacher evaluation system that then maybe you could use for both purposes. It does change the standard from reasonable and just cause to arbitrary and capricious, which, in essence, this is a legal thing that says, instead of the school district having to show that they have a reasonable and just cause for removing a teacher, the teachers would have to show that the school was being arbitrary and capricious in their decision to remove them.
So the burden would be on the teacher.
Changes the burden.
Correct. Correct, and this is something I think the superintendent has talked about a bit, and other groups have talked about. That's one of the more contentious, if not the contentious, issue in the bills.
Yeah, I mean, I...
It gets at, some of the stuff in the governor's budget about having probation for five years and changing around some of that system, so that once you're in tenure, if you're ineffective, you can go back to sort of a probationary status and have to do that over again. This is just after a first, a very quick first read of the bills, and we'll have better in-depth analysis. Bob Taylor's been working really hard with me, and we're going to be working with the legislature to try to impact this in a, in a meaningful way, to make sure that it, number one, addresses the reforms that the state board talked about in the paper that the state board voted on, but that it makes sure that it aligns all of the different pieces and initiatives going on here, like the tenure, the licensure, three-tier system, and all of these different pieces, to make sure that they all fit together.
So the probation period now is four years, right? So it would be adding one year?
Yes.
It is four years now, correct?
Well, yes, I believe that's true, but I, don't quote me on it.
It's three years. This is where it's confusing. New teachers are three years, but they have four years before they get tenure.
What do you mean, it's two years?
They're concerned new teachers, they get mentoring and induction for the first three years, and then after four successful years, then they can have a provisional, I mean, then they can move to the professional life and get tenure.
But it's four years before they can get tenure.
Four years before they get tenure. That's why the years don't match up. It's a hodgepodge.
But it would change under the governor's... Governor, it would be one more year.
Well, it wouldn't, in the governor's proposal, that you would earn tenure by multiple years of demonstrated teaching proficiency while you're in provisional status, and you could then keep tenure by not having several years of not being, demonstrating proficiency. So you have to earn tenure, it's not a given after four years or five years. And you can lose tenure under the proposals, which matches the Education Trust and other proposals that have been in the book.
And here's, I mean, I think, at least for me, sometimes the anxiety of all the bills is, is if you take a deep breath, to some degree, the governor's a backstop on this. He's more moderate than some of the bills have been. You know, maybe not as moderate as others would want, but I'm just saying, if you think of some of this, the odds are, he's not going to sign some of the more extreme measures. I guess everything can be compromised in the final analysis, but he's put the state down by describing in his message what he thought tenure should be.
Right, so it modulate the more reactionary punitive approaches. And it's because he's listening to us.
Already, this is...
Because he believes it, too.
Exactly. You know, and I, I still think we together have helped him and others understand that, you know, if we end up just demoralizing the whole profession, if we put everyone in fear, instead of saying, these are really opportunities to improve when you see these pieces happen possibly, and then there's time to show that, and then also, I think, you know, I think one of the things that is not talked about, but I believe from my experience, there have been teachers who've been unfairly removed before tenure by arbitrary reasons established by a principal or someone else. So, I mean, you get to a point where you could make an argument, a lot of this is fairer, depending on how you look at this, especially for those examples where people have unfairly been gone before they even had a chance to get tenure. There'll be more debate. Do you have the legislative meeting coming?
There's two. There's one, actually...
No, I mean yours.
Oh, yes, we have one on Monday, and so you'll have the analyses by then. The House has a meeting scheduled right now, as we speak, they're taking testimony on the bills, and tomorrow they have a presentation at 8:30 by Frederick Hess from American Enterprise Institute for Public Policy Research, related to education reform and teacher quality, and then they'll accept more testimony on the bills. They're not voting this week. This is still garnering input from the public.
So Monday will be pretty timely for the board, for Nancy and the committee. Go ahead.
The other issue going is the anti-bullying bill. Senate Bill 137 was reported by Senate Judiciary last week, and it's on the Senate floor. It's expected to move probably this week or next. The bill, as reported from the Senate Committee, unfortunately took out even the minimal stuff that the board had supported in the previous session. On a positive note, the Office of Civil Rights has been working extremely hard behind the scenes to get a new version introduced and to get support from some of the key groups on the conservative side, including like the family forum and some of those groups, which is incredible. It doesn't have enumeration, but the way they did it followed what some other states have done, which is instead of, instead of enumerating, they made very clear what a beha, what the behaviors are that is bullying, and said, if anyone for any reason is subject to these behaviors, that's bullying. So rather than listing out, you know, weight, or gender, or sexual orientation, or all of the other hot-button issues, they instead make a very clear definition and includes anything that's humiliating, taunting, I don't have the list in front of me, but it's much more in-depth than any of the previous versions were in terms of how they define what the behavior is. And so that's the new sort of tack they're taking. And that's, I was hoping that the actual version of the bill was going to be introduced by today, so that I could say to you, the version is S-whatever, and that's a good version to support. I don't know what the S-whatever is going to be. There will be a version introduced probably tomorrow or Thursday that's, that's offered by, that's been worked on by the Office of Civil Rights with a lot of the advocate groups and some of the other parties involved outside of the legislature. But I did include in the report that you got what all of the points are that they were really pushing for, so that you could understand how, they still prefer enumeration, but in an effort of compromise, they think that this is a way to go. And it, it goes along with what Snyder called for, Governor Snyder called for in his speech about comprehensive anti-bullying legislation, not just sort of that peripheral piece that has been talked about. As you know, we had public hearings on the accreditation pursuant to the state accreditation law, and I attached the comments. There'll be more information on that and recommendations for any possible changes from staff down the road, but we just wanted to get to you the summary of the comments. And at the federal level, just as a heads up, the U.S. Department of Ed has announced it's holding a number of roundtable discussions on teacher education accountability, teacher preparation, and college completion. There's more information on the web, and I'll send you the link, because I just got this myself, but it's, it looks like that, that topic of teacher preparation, teacher accountability, and that whole piece is now happening on, on both the federal and the state level, so it'll be interesting to hear what they hear at that level compared to what we hear.
Comments or questions for John?
Given the bullying legislation timeline, whatever it may be, and maybe also for Nancy and Cassandra, do we need to, I mean, is it timely, do we need to reiterate some statement of our support for comprehensive anti-bullying legislation and call on, you know, the legislature to enact a strong version that includes A, B, and C, whether it's reporting and/or the proxy for enumeration or whatever? Should we do that now, today, or do we have time to, I don't know, Nancy, Nancy, Cassandra, because I think it's important to keep reiterating, we've got to model anti-bullying policy as a state board. We agree and welcome Governor Snyder's call for, you know, comprehensive state legislation to get passed. We continue to press for that, and it's got to include A, B, and C, whatever those are.
Timing-wise, obviously, like I said, the bill will move, but this is only the first chamber, so even if you were to say, wait, if you wanted to, to see if a particular substitute was introduced, you could do that, and then have the legislative committee vote next week. It does mean that the full board wouldn't have a chance to vote till June, or you could do, like you said, and suggest that you move something based on the points that the Office of Civil Rights is fighting for, or pieces based on your own board policy.
I think it's nice if we can have something in specifically, you know, some bill that we can say, yeah, we support. I think that's a lot stronger than reiterating what we've already said, because we've already said it. So I guess, I don't know about you, Cassandra, but my thoughts would be, I would like to see what this impending bill is, and then decide, you know, yes, no, we need to have this done, or whatever, if that's, all right.
But you think it'll be a month before they do it in the other chamber? I think they're trying to...
Yeah, I don't think it would be that.
I don't think we'll have a chance to vote on it.
Can we do something online?
That's what I'm asking, what are you...
You can officially do that.
Can't do that.
You need physically present to vote. Well, you need a percentage physically present.
Is there any, I don't know if we've ever done this.
I mean, we could still have the legislative, you know, I could submit something and saying, the legislative committee has recommended, assuming that next Monday we have something and you, and a vote was taken, you could use that to, to express your opinion to the legislature and...
Do we, do we need to do something formally today, while we've got a quorum, just to empower our legislative committee to make a recommendation or something? I'm just groping for what would be appropriate.
Why would you do that anyway, don't you? I mean, we've always had the legislative committee recommend things anyway. I mean, you could, if you want to put it verbally, I mean, I suppose we can, but I mean, I just think, if you have the legislative committee recommending, I think that that's, that's cool. But, I mean, I'll...
I mean, that does happen, as you know, fairly frequently, just because we're in between stuff, and we take what we have from the committee. Admittedly, it, in theory, could be something that the majority of the board wouldn't agree with.
No, I know, it's worth, no.
Not after today, we got through this, so I'm feeling good. We'll be fine.
No, and that's, that's fine, I'm just wondering if there's any way to have a even stronger statement, State Board of Education calls for support of, you know, SB 47, would I have our legislative committee do that on our behalf, if that's the strongest we can do?
We don't have an SB yet, so...
Yeah, I know.
It's hard to call for that.
Whatever you recommend, I just want to, I really want us to reiterate and do everything we can to encourage passage of this.
I did notice that in the piece you adopted earlier on the governor's reform, did we already adopt that? There is a piece in there on anti-bullying.
Yes, there is.
So you have re-expressed your...
Yeah.
Support for comprehensive reform in that way, and then if you want to wait.
I think it's, I mean, I think it's, it's okay if the legislative committee, it comes from the legislative committee, and then when we send it out to the rest of the board members, you are all free to follow up with members of the legislature and reiterate your support as well.
It's a good idea.
Could we authorize the legislative committee to take a position?
You could, but we're going to do it anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, but we can authorize it today, since we're not going to meet in time to vote for the board. Board authorize the legislative committee to express the board's...
We kind of thought, now, maybe we've been operating incorrectly, but we've kind of thought, especially when we're stuck in a time warp, that you kind of have authorized the legislative committee, and we run sometimes with whatever they've done, because the next day is the issue, or something like that. If you, if we're, but maybe we've overstepped there, and you didn't intend for that. That's kind of how we've operated. If they, if we can, and there's time, we bring it back to the entire board, but often we just run.
It's typical in most associations.
If you get a substitute, could we take action at the retreat?
If it's an open meeting, which it is.
Right, I'm just saying that that's the only requirement.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, maybe we could do that, because that'll be next week.
Marx will get it on the agenda as possible, then, I guess.
But I, I mean, I, we haven't, I don't think we've ever formally, I mean, a recommendation from the legislative committee hasn't historically, though maybe we've been representing as such. The state board action is X.
Well, it usually comes back to the board the following month.
Right. And I like Kathy's idea of if it's permissible for us to authorize the state board action on bullying position.
I don't know if I can handle that power.
Delegate it to the legislative committee to speak on our behalf. Motion?
Here's the thing, though, if, I mean, I don't mind doing that, but here's the thing, if you feel that you need to, this is a process point, if you feel you need to take a vote on that, that action now, then every single time that the legislative committee meets, that you want them to have some force of impact on the legislature, you're going to have to take a vote every single time, and I thought that's what the legislative committee did anyway. I didn't think, I think we do it anyway.
Well, maybe the legislative committee meetings could be timed to occur just before a board meeting, rather than just after.
Yeah, but we'd still be missing legislation.
Right.
Yeah, but we can still have feedback to the full board in a more timely...
But I don't think, there's, there's nothing disingenuous about us saying the legislative committee of the State Board of Education recommends this.
Right, I don't think there is, either.
No, I just want to validate the same goal, powerfully.
And if the committee messes up, you throw them off the committee.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
No committee.
Kind of like calling them off the puck, you know?
Good with that for now, and then, yeah, I think Mary Ann's making, there are times you have timed the committee, but often it's when, like tomorrow is going to be when they bring out a Senate bill, they wouldn't have had it either way.
We could add to the retreat.
So, any further comments or questions for Lisa? Thank you, Lisa. This is the nominations for possible awards for...
Okay, last...
We've already done that, though, last week, for some.
We did nominate, I believe, Representative Hockstraw for Policy Leader of the Year.
Not Hockstraw, it was, uh...
No.
Who was it?
Aylers.
Vern Aylers.
Sorry, my mistake.
Yeah.
So we have a Policy Leader of the Year. My mistake. So we have a Policy Leader of the Year nominee. There's a Distinguished Service Award, which I don't believe we, we did. It says, "We seek nominees who are current or recently retired state board members." To your left, a woman has nominations, I believe, in that vein.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
That would be Mary Ann.
I had a nomination for, well, I think we kind of informally talked about Policy Leader as Vern Aylers.
We did.
We voted on it.
Right.
So it's not informal.
And the Distinguished Service Award, I'd like to nominate Diane Ravitch. No, wait, for Distinguished Service. I was thinking a combo award to Carolyn Curtin and Liz Bauer.
I think that's a great idea.
And I think they were quite a team, and we were honored to have them among us for eight years and...
Liz is still among us, whipping us.
Well, we don't know about Carolyn. She may be.
She may be too.
She's up having a good time.
She, yeah. We emailed last week. She's doing good.
Oh, good. And then Friend of Education, I was thinking about...
May I ask you to pause?
Yeah. Oh, paused.
Any other, any other suggestions for Distinguished Service Award? May I suggest, Mr. Chairman?
That's a nomination. I support it.
Okay.
Both by Mary Ann, supported by Kathy. Any further discussion?
It's a great combo, because they met as candidates of opposing parties, and they developed into a great team.
Could be a Disney movie.
Lifetime, shown on Lifetime, yeah.
They didn't know each other until they started eating the campaign trail, and then they...
I do think, though, it would be important to, it really is an important part of the nominating letter or whatever, the Rs and Ds together. I mean, it really is a big legacy for this board.
They were perfect role models for us.
Yeah. So any further discussion on that nomination, the two? All in favor, I?
Aye.
Opposed, same?
Cool. Okay, next nominee.
Oh, thank you. For the Friend of Education, I was thinking about a book author, Diane Ravitch, who has written a book called The Death and Life of, yeah, The Death and Life of the Great American School System. And it's been quite a good bestseller, and it's won a number of awards. And so I'd like to nominate her.
Second.
Nominated by Mary Ann, supported by Cassandra. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I'm not a huge fan of Diane Ravitch. I'm not going to oppose the nomination. I think it's fine. I just, I don't, I'm not sure, this is just my projection, if she's not more about what will get her a lot of ink than consistent values and policy understanding.
Have you heard her talk?
Meaning she was one of the chief advocates for this philosophy, and now she's turned 180 degrees to this philosophy, so I don't totally trust her core.
Well, I think she has, has put a lot of thought into this, and she's got a lot of information to back up what she's saying. And she wasn't afraid to change. I mean, she realized she thought she was on the right track with no child left behind, and realized at some point it wasn't right. And she wrote a book about it. So, any further...
Any further discussion? Dan?
Just, yeah, I have the same concern.
She was nominated a few years ago as the Enemy of Education Award. I don't mean to make light of that. I think there's room for both views on this. Yes, sir.
Just to confer with Kathy or anyone else that's got more experience with this, is this intended to be somewhat of national significance as opposed to state significance?
The Friend of Education, I'd think so.
Okay.
Although some of these, I'm not sure were, but they, they did it anyway. But I did hear Diane Ravitch speak a number of times when she was, she's been in town in the state several times in the last year, I guess. And she says she changed her mind because of the data. It was all because of the results, the lack of results she saw. So I would support the nomination.
Ernie, Ernie's changed.
Right, so...
The what?
He says now, he says eighty percent of schools will not be passing AYP in, by 2014.
Eighty, is it?
Yeah, or eighty-two percent.
More than that.
He actually, we talked with him about this. He, I'm just, I don't know if it's even worth mentioning, but he, he knew that would happen if they didn't reauthorize. So this is his way to say, can you get reauthorized, or everyone's going to be at AYP? But I, it's an interesting point. Any further discussion? All in favor, I?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Looks like some non-votes or whatever we'd call it, but it's not, it's not that big a, I shouldn't say it's not a big deal, but it's not a big, big deal.
Well, it probably won't be unless...
Just because we nominate them doesn't mean they're going to get an award.
All right, now, we have nominations for the NASB Board of Directors, President-Elect, Secretary of Treasury, Area Director. We could put this off till September 30th, but we could dispose of it now. Your pleasure.
We don't have any...
Oh, I thought we had it down by noon.
This is where, Richard, if you have, if you can begin to get intelligence about who's worthy, if anyone, that would be helpful. It would be nice to go to one of the meetings first, but... So, yeah, maybe, I mean, we don't have to do it.
You'll be going to the new...
Go and take a good look at them. Yes.
Yeah, they'll have stuff for you.
Look, look them up and down. Look them in the eye. Tell us who to vote for.
The nominations committee meeting is in June.
Interview candidates.
In order to adequately prepare for the nominations committee meeting, nominations for the following offices must be received at NASB headquarters no later than June 8th.
Oh, my mistake. There you are.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
They don't even have them, yeah.
So, well, I mean, we don't have to.
It would be if you wanted to offer one of yourselves.
You don't have appropriate information, certainly.
We nominated John. Do you want to run again?
Do that?
I still think you...
Enough on your plate?
Still think you would have been heard.
You would have.
Set them straight. Nominated again, John?
You could run again, Ethan.
Thank you. It's not an organization that's been healable by me. Richard, with his divine powers, will have more success. You think they need an exorcism, eh?
Yeah.
Have you got that in your bag? Oh, let, let me do a little research here, and maybe we'll come back to it at May 24th if we need to.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Very good. That completes that item, and we're to consent agenda.
I move.
Supported by Cassandra, supported by Kath. All in favor, I?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Any comments by board?
Yes, I would like to make a comment or a suggestion that next month we talk about the situation that has come up with the special education community over what's called Certificates of Completion for high school students versus diplomas for rest of graduates. And it's caused a big problem with graduates who can't go on. They can't get into college, they can't get a job, they can't join the military. Everyone wants a diploma. They, they won't accept the Certificate of Completion. So I, I was hoping maybe we could, maybe have Eleanor White come and discuss it.
She can come. You do know it's a local call, but...
It's a local call.
Well, I appreciate, I mean, Mary Ann had some constituents who flagged this issue, and Sally, thank you and others for trying to help attend to it, but it may be that we need to publicly ratify again, you know, what is going on here? Are people not being acquainted with the personal curriculum option? Are local districts not communicating at all on these topics? Are they abusing and handing out, awarding a certificate of completion with no knowledge of the people, why it's happening, and you don't have a diploma, you know? So we don't know what's going on, but how do we constructively animate attention to this and figure out what, if anything, we can do to China's bottom? I don't know.
At least make potential employers or, or the military know about these things.
I mean, we, first of all, yes, we could have Eleanor go through that, and then theoretically the board could maybe resolve, and we get it to all board presidents, and in effect, why aren't you using the personal curriculum? You know, because you can get a, even if, you can get a diploma that way.
Well, according to the people who wrote me, their, their children were in those personal curriculums.
They still chose not to give them a...
And, right, no, it's what they're...
It's totally up to the local if they choose. So I think the awareness is...
So people might be aware of it, yeah. But I, I would just like to get it out there publicly to talk about it.
Okay. Can do that. And then maybe, as you said, or as I guess I'm saying, maybe awareness to locals that in case what John's saying is true, are you aware that, number one, you're going to have a PC, and even if you don't have a PC or it doesn't complete, it's up to you whether you give a certificate or a diploma?
Mm-hmm.
And direct the parents there.
We can always do an e-blast, because it's in the, as I mentioned earlier, it's in the FAQs. This comes up every year around this time because graduations are coming up. So what we could do is even maybe make it an annual e-blast to remind districts around probably April as these things start to come up. But it's too late to do anything in honesty around April. But this, it comes up every year.
Maybe the, maybe the awareness next month in a brief presentation, and then board suggesting that every year in April, we remind the districts of their unilateral options. This is their call, and we, maybe you want to go further and say, recommend whenever possible diploma is to be given, blah, blah, blah.
I think a presentation at the board, an update or a clarification, or whatever you want to call it, is helpful because it goes out across the state on the internet. It does raise awareness.
Okay.
Clarifies.
Okay, Eleanor, I mean, she can...
Yeah, I'm not sure that needs to be limited even to the special education circumstance, but a personal curriculum in general, I don't, I think most people don't understand what a personal curriculum is, and it would be helpful to revisit that.
We could have a tandem up there so it doesn't look like just a special ed issue.
Well, I appreciate that.
Yeah, agreed.
It really is, it's not a special ed issue at all. It is, can impact special ed students, but it's not just that.
Yeah, so maybe you want to present it then.
No, I'll have Andy.
Happy and happy.
Okay, all right. Richard?
I can't answer.
In connection with this, I'm supposed to, I don't know why, I'm supposed to talk half an hour at the Special Education Advisory Committee on June 1st.
Doesn't have to be a half an hour.
Okay, we'll make it forty minutes. But if, if this is something that I should address or review, please, you know, send me the concern or the policy so that, that I can include that in anything else that I, I should be carrying to them on behalf of our board here.
Sally will get you that clarification that Eleanor wrote up.
Okay, thank you.
Basically, it's totally up to the district. They're totally entitled to give a diploma, and some of them are stubborn about that for any number of reasons, and, and maybe correctly, but, but at least this will be an awareness issue.
Richard, can you send that out to everybody? I think I asked you to send it out to all the board members.
Yeah, I think so, but...
I think I...
I keep everything, so we'll be able to find it.
Okay. Any further comments? Yes, Ken?
I wanted to mention that I attended a NASB and Association of State Health Officials joined meeting on our, on our NASB grant on health education, school health policies. And it was really quite good, very good presentations on what's being done in other states and what the national standards and so on, for not only healthy foods, but for physical education and ways of involving, including that, and lesson plans so that children get up during the day. They don't have to wait for recess. Should work in, this really struck me, that they should work it into their lesson plans at elementary school that every hour or so the kids get up and just march around the room or something, just something to get them moving, so they don't think that the teachers are so stressed to teach, 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 that they don't give the kids any chance to move around. Adults have to move around too. They were getting everybody in the, in the room to stand up after these presentations.
Yeah, there we go. Dan's going to lead the...
You can do it one way or the other. You can either have it structured or not.
I'm not sure with me now. Okay, there can be two of us.
It was a very, it was a very interesting and valuable conference, and there were Kyle Durant from our staff, and two people from the Community Health Department, Department of Community Health, and I, you know, this state was supposed to have a state board member. This was all paid for through CDC and Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, so, and there was somebody that, and then last week, Mary Ann and I attended the School Health Committee meeting here, that unfortunately Richard had to officiate at a funeral and be there. And that was also very informative, and one of the things we learned was about a new grant that the state received, a state on safe schools, it's a new interpretation. We're one of 11 states that received this grant from the U.S. Department of Education. It's focused even more on the whole child mental health, emotional health, and the way to achieve safe schools, and the bullying, all of that is part of it. And I wrote it to Bob Higgins from her, who we broke for lunch, and he's apparently the staff person that's leading, that's working on this. So I think when they're ready, I'd love to have a presentation from them on what's happening in that, because it fits in with our policy on mental health and on social, emotional learning, and all the things that Liz kept before us. And it would be good to keep those things before us, even if Liz isn't here, to remind us.
Can do that.
I keep needing to, Liz, wherever you are, you know, check Liz's to do this for us and making sure we're making some progress on it. But one of the things she was recently encouraging too was to, that we talked about a bit and just haven't done, is to do a little more interactive communications as a board. Maybe have a Facebook page that everyone could use. Things like that are easy to do and would be helpful. And, and in the spirit of today, this morning's presentation as well, let's get out of the 18th century and participate, which I am not the best at myself, in the 21st.
I'd even up to the 20th.
Anything else?
Oh, no, I'm...
Okay, and then I guess encourage everyone, if you're interested, the 9:30 part of the orientation might be helpful. The board members, as I said earlier, on Tuesday, the 24th.
So what, 9:30 you would have an orientation of what goes on at the department? And what time does the retreat start?
9:30 here, 10:30 on the upper parking level.
Oh, 9:30 here and 10:30 on the, that stands where we met last year.
Is the retreat proper, starting at 10:30?
Yes, the retreat's proper.
Right, so we're going to push along on the 9:30 to make that work. But I think, you know, we've talked about it, length, staffs aware, going to try to keep it, it's a saying to allow time for some questions and then hopefully get there at 10:30.
And I'm, I'm going to go at 9:30, too.
Some of its names and faces and...
I'm pretty acquainted with what's going on here.
And I think, I mean, again, I don't mean to... And I think, I mean, again, I don't mean to overpush you if you can't make that, but I think it's, it's an honor to them, too, that they're being heard, you know, and there's a few more. But, you know, whatever works for you, we're good. Okay, go home. We're going to-